Lynn Shuvi, Finance Director.
Aaron Schmidt, City Engineer.
Nikki Sunziden, City Clerk.
Eric Perschmann, City Council.
I'm Aaron Schmidt, the Community Department Director.
Kristi Mack, City Council.
Laura Sayer, City Council.
Awesome.
All right, so Dylan, welcome.
Hi.
How long you've been on, for a few months?
Yeah, well, you might have to stand.
No, wow.
Sorry everyone can see me, I might as well.
Very official.
Yeah, so I've actually worked for the Sheriff's Office for, since October of 2021, and I've worked closely with Brent, I think, for a couple of months here. So it's nice, thank you all for inviting me here to finally put faces to names and meet people. It's, instead of exchanging emails, it's nice to actually speak to people, so. Gives me the opportunity to do that. So with that being said, you know, I was in Chatham for two years and I saw this opportunity come up and I said, absolutely, I'd come over to Carver and Victoria and be happy to help you guys out, so. With that being said, I know you guys asked me to do two truths and a lie, so I'll just jump right into that, because I got it up here. So, to start, I've broken six bones. I have two kids at home, a, oh, he just turned 14, 14 months, or 14 months, and...
That's good to make it believable, right there.
Yeah, that's a true one, too.
You can't go one way.
I'll do a new one.
We guess at the end.
Just for the side fact, just...
You know, and then we guess, we show like, two, we think number two is the lie. So...
Okay. Broken six bones?
The other kid?
Eight.
That's a good try, you can tell the difference.
There we go. Guys are investigators over here. So I've broken six bones in my body, I've only ever owned trucks, and I started my career in law enforcement in 2021. Ooh, you want to go around and guess?
No, we should, we should with fingers.
Okay, one, two, or three. Pretty wide span here.
A very wide span, yes.
Okay, so my, my lie here is I've never broken a bone in my body.
Yeah.
Oh, you blintzed, I thought you had two.
So I've done, I've always done snowboarding, I've done football, all these sports, I've never broken a bone. So, that's my one lie.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, now I say that, email you guys next week, jinxed it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the other thing I did, if you don't mind if I could talk about, I know there's a traffic detail on JCP, I kind of wanted to open up the floor if you guys had questions more on that, I know Brent's been forwarding my emails out to you, and so I just wanted to address any questions, concerns if you guys did have those.
I think, not only on JCP, but we also hear, also from residents, on more residential streets, and it tends to be more of the collector's streets or anywhere where there's a good amount of straightaway for folks to kind of get up to speed, so Mount Hope, Spring Creek Drive, Sixth Street, Fourth Street, Carver Bluffs Parkway. What else am I missing?
Carver Bluffs. Monroe, I've gotten a lot of complaints there for the stoplight, right on Monroe, on JCP. I've had citizens approach me and say, hey, people are blowing this light, so that's one we've been sitting on.
Yeah.
Mount Hope, I know we have one deputy specifically loves to sit on that road, so watch out. But, you know, halfway through the month of November here, our traffic detail on JCP has been pretty aggressive, as far as enforcement, traffic enforcement. As far as the commercial vehicle standpoint, we're working closely with the State Patrol to get them out here. They have, I think, two troopers in the area, so we're working with them to get more of a directed patrol of JCP.
I've seen them there a few times.
Have you?
Yep.
When, when we're pulling people around JCP, outside of even the trucks, because we're relying, we're relying on the State Patrol for that, are we giving warnings or are we giving tickets? Because we have a lot of people traveling from outside of city limits, too.
Right.
So a warning might be great, but, or a warning where I live in Carver might be a little bit different than a warning if I'm driving through somewhere I don't live every day.
Right, of course, that's a good question, so I know just, it comes up to each deputy, it's discretionary, right? When we do, we do traffic details like this, everyone has their own number they'll stop people for, but when there's traffic details that are specific, usually it's, the flow of traffic on JCP is, let's say, 55, 56, anything over, let's say, 57, you can stop for. Now, we could cite for anything 10 over, I cite personally for anything 10. So, if it's 50 on JCP and someone's going 60, they'll get a citation.
Any other questions? All right, what shift do you work?
So I work Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and every other Saturday. I don't know if you guys have met Tyler Nelson, he was here this morning for, I think, a panic alarm? So, you guys probably got a chance to meet him a little bit, but he works opposite of me, he works Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and every other Saturday. So, feel free to say hi to him, he's just as nice as me.
Awesome. Thank you so much for coming.
Absolutely.
Dippity West issued the first citation for the legal access to the fire hydrant.
Oh, it did. In fact, I had to reach out to our records department to implement that ordinance, so that took, call it, two weeks to get put in, so now we can cite for that.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
I know it sounds silly, like when you're going home, dinner table conversation, what did you do? I busted a fire hydrant hydrant. Your pirate is a big deal to our water system.
Oh, absolutely.
Like, if we can make that stop happening, I think we'll be in a little bit of better place, so thank you.
And I think Brent explained to me, it kind of disrupts the water flow, too. So, I know it's, that's a pretty big issue for you guys, so I sent down an email after that ordinance was put out to the other deputies working in Carver in the area, so they... And then all those placards are now on the fire hydrant, so. Absolutely.
Do we give, you know, we, do we ever give permission at the fire hydrants or they have to go to public works to get it?
In some occasions, public services gives them permission, but they have a special, like, device and meter that would be noticeable to the Sheriff's Office if they had it.
Okay.
Then I did, I didn't want to capitalize on that, so over by the daycare by QuickTrip, I believe it was just prior to this ordinance getting pushed out, there was a fire truck there from another city pumping from the fire hydrant? I don't know if that's something you want to need to address, or...
Yeah, let's connect with that offline, I'm not aware of that instance.
And that seems strange, so yeah, let's figure it out with that one.
Yeah, with more of a community-oriented contact, so.
But of all the, I'd just really say, our folks, our city employees are very well branded, or they drive big red trucks.
That's fair.
Those are really the only folks who should be calling.
Absolutely.
Those hydrants, so thank you so much for that.
Yeah, anyone have any other questions?
No, thank you for making the decision to leave Chatham behind.
Yeah, Chatham was fun, but it's nice being out here, it's a really good community ordinance, so everyone out here's been really friendly, and it's been a good experience so far, so.
Awesome.
All righty, well, if you guys have any questions at all, I think you guys all have my email, feel free to send me an email if it's a random question, or a concern, or some sort of ordinance you have a question about.
Great, thank you.
Awesome.
Be safe, don't break your balls.
Don't break your balls, don't shout.
You all know that I so firmly believe in jinxes. All right, next we have the City Manager's report, oh, I thought you were going to present in front of them.
Yeah.
Just a brief update, Lynn and I have been working with FEMA, they just recently, like, late last week told us that they don't have alignment to help us with the mitigation at Riverside Park, because the Minnesota River is a navigable waterway, that we'd have to work with another agency that has programs out there for that, so FEMA won't be a resource for us for working on that erosion, but Aaron Schmidt and the city engineering team are still working on this update to the concept of what we can do for erosion protection and the cost, just so that we have that, and when we find grant programs or other sources of funding, we can use that information as a resource to apply for those funds.
Great, any questions? Was it FEMA that originally told us that FEMA's update? Okay. Just make sure, all right, okay. Any City Council requests? Nobody's sticking up, no one's making eye contact. Okay, the draft 2025 Truth and Taxation presentation, Shuvi.
All right, thanks for your questions there. All right, so we'll be taking a look at the preview of the 2025 Truth and Taxation. So we're looking at our budget timeline, we are here on November 18th at the preview, and we'll be looking to adopt the final levy on December 16th. So looking at our budget process in detail, we started this process back on August 1st with our initial staff request to the City Manager at just over 4.2 million, and that took our levy increase, it should say over 2024, I apologize, to 13.63%. And then we presented to the City Council on August 19th at a 12.61% increase. We went back and we did some work for the second presentation to council, where we then reduced the general fund expenditures by 155,000, if you recall. We took out the capital improvements and we are going to levy separately for those instead of including those as operating expenses. We also decreased the contracted law enforcement by 17,000, and that brought us down to 11.84% where we're sitting currently. So just a review for what is truth in taxation, it was enacted in 1988, so that's when residents began receiving their parcel-specific notices, and it's just so that residents can come and ask questions. What's going on in my city? What kind of taxes, why am I paying this, basically? And then residents can get feedback on the proposed budget and levy. I received mine, proposed taxes today, so they should be showing up in your mailbox today, tomorrow.
They're live online.
Okay, perfect. So I think this happened last year, too, as I was presenting, we were receiving them in our mailboxes. So, just to point out, the City of Carver tax is only a portion of the total property tax. There's also the school district, there's Carver County, and there's also special taxing districts. So when we talk about your property taxes going up or going down, need to look at each specific line item. And then it's also driven off of that estimated market value, which you'll see at the very top of the statement.
Can we, sorry, this is a picky, but for your presentation, could we use a different example rather than somebody whose taxes nearly double from, yeah, 2022 to 2023?
This will be an old, this is an old statement from last year.
Okay, but yeah, I'll make sure that I, I'll grab one, yeah, but it does, that's anomaly. Yeah, and that's probably a new construction example.
Yeah, sorry to be super...
No, no, that's totally fine.
So when we're looking at our 2025 market value data, and these are always, remember that these are based on almost 18 months prior assessed values, so we're always lagging behind, because the assessor goes out and they assess values almost 18 months prior, and then they'll land on our tax rolls in 2025. So for the percentage of new construction, we had a 4.36% increase in market value. So our average valued home for 2025 in Carver is $433,500. 90% of the 24 market change is from new construction. So, the current homes that were already here barely saw an increase in market value, is what I'm trying to say with that, and that's what this is seeing here. So this is a graph that represents the slide that I just showed you for new residential construction value added, of 41 million. We always like to show this slide to show residents that the City of Carver residents pay zero dollars in franchise fees. Those can be hidden fees that show up on all of your utility bills, or some of your utility bills, Excel Energy, MetroNet, these are deals that they make with cities to provide them with revenue for providing their services within their cities, and the City of Carver does not do that. So just a clarification as well, I do feel like some residents do call and get a little bit confused about, what is a general fund, what is an enterprise fund? Why are my taxes going up to pay for water? That's not correct, so I kind of laid it out here. The general fund revenue comes from property taxes, permit revenue, and other city services, and this is the city's basic operating fund, and the city tax rate and levy must support this in the future, future operations. The enterprise funds, these act like a business, so these are the funds where the revenue comes from the water, sewer, and stormwater, or new utility bills and connection fees. So this is operated as like a standalone business, sometimes called a proprietary fund. So the utility rates must support current and future operations and infrastructure. So just a quick general fund revenue rundown, our revenue isn't super exciting, so we have property taxes, and then we have local government aid, building permit revenue, and then we get a little bit of money from our townships for rural fire contracts. We do have some city services, rentals, very small percentage of that. So here I've laid it out, too, where you can see, a majority of our revenue comes from property tax revenue, and then building permits, and then all the way down to facility fees and licenses. So for our general fund expense spotlight, a large part is going to be the Carver County Sheriff contract, I'm just calling out a few of the ones that I felt were important for this year. The Chaska Parks and Rec Agreement was 87,000, that's where our residents can take advantage of those programs that Chaska is offering. We offer a citywide cleanup, which is great for the residents to get rid of their trash in the spring. Southwest Prime Bus Service is budgeted at 45,000, and then we're also budgeting for a public services seasonal position, more of a gardening-type position. So here is, here are the expenditures laid out in a graph, so you can see, public services, there's a lot going on in the city with streets and parks, and then admin, fire, building inspections, all the way down to police. So what's going on with employee pay and benefits? We're planning for that full implementation of the Employee Pay for Performance Plan. If you remember, we did that compensation classification study, the purpose of that was to retain and attract employees in the competitive job market. We don't want to lose employees to the Chaskas, Eaton Prairies, you know, the cities around us, we want to keep our good employees where they're at. This, this will be about $149,000 impact to the general fund budget this year would be the biggest hit to get to that full implementation. We're also planning for a one-to-full-time employee addition, a public services mechanic, to start in July, so halfway through the year. The impact to the general fund budget would be $28,873,000. So this position is shared with water and sewer, so that's why you're only seeing a portion of that salary affected to the general fund budget. And then again, I mentioned the public services planting gardening position. And then another benefit is, we are changing our healthcare provider to Blue Cross Blue Shield due to premium increases. So we budgeted for a 10% increase, and we were able to stay right in that 10% by switching to Blue Cross Blue Shield. We were looking at about a 17.8% increase if we were to stay with Health Partners. So, the combination of the HS, of, excuse me, the high deductible increasing, and then only the 5.75% increase in premiums, we were able to stay within that 10%.
I have one quick question.
Yeah.
How long are we with Health Partners that I, it seems like we are switching around our providers every few years, is that correct, or am I, I've been around too long and it feels like it's more like this? I'm trying to remember if we've been with them for more than one year.
So I've been with Health Partners since I've been here, two and a half years?
It's been at least three or four years.
Okay. The only reason I ask is because if, you know, as employees who are, who have the health insurance, it feels a little like discombobulated that, okay, we have, you know, we're setting our plans, we've got this for this couple of years, and now we're going to a different healthcare provider, then, you know, do we switch next year to another one? I mean, I just don't want to throw employees out of balance, that's obviously part of your benefits package, so 17% is a lot, I'm not saying that's not, but I just want to be a little bit careful that we're not shuffling around every other year for health insurance. Is the network the same?
The network is the same.
It is, okay, so that makes things better.
Yeah, and better prescription coverage.
Okay.
There you go.
Done, done and done. Are you happy with that? Is that okay?
Yeah, I think we're all good.
All right. I have a question on number, oh, sorry, number one, pay for performance, that 149665, that is across-the-board union and non-union, correct?
That's correct.
Good question.
Thank you. Yes. So just a snapshot of our capital improvement outlook, we don't have a ton of things planned for 2025, but we do have big things planned. So, for the fire department, we're looking at a compressor station to add to that new area that they are expanding on, and then we're planning for that land acquisition for the public services facility, and I'll talk about this later when I talk about the long-term financial plan in the regular session, but things can change, so this is what we're planning, right? And then the funding source for that would be a bond, and then we're, the project for the street maintenance project is pictured to the right-hand side there, and I can absolutely send you the pavement management plan later if you would like that. The funds for that would be the street maintenance levy as well as state aid funds. So I expanded the general fund levy history, I usually only show about three years, but I thought it would be kind of fun to show a longer history to see, how has Carver grown with their levy? What, you know, what have we done? You can see in 2022, we added the street maintenance levy, now we're adding the equipment levy, and how has our average valued home grown even? So I put those bullets in, I think I shared this at the last presentation with council, so our average levy has increased by, over the past 10 years, our average levy is 10.85%. So if you average all of the numbers, it's 10.85% increase. The average valued home has increased in value by 116,000, that's a lot. The tax rate has decreased by 8.48%, and our population has grown substantially in seven years. And so has our levy, because we have to support those residents, we have to support those streets, and then we also have to support staff. So, the impact to the average valued home has gone up less than $200 in seven years, annually, so that's why I expanded that, just to kind of show. And then here, you can see that little pink on top, how we're adding the equipment levy now, and what it's made up of. So debt service is one of the categories of our levy, and it is to pay for all of the debt that the city owes for different things, refunding, city hall improvements, and then our newest one, the public service improvements, and then the addition to the fire station remodel. So that was about 100, that'll be about $141,000 annually. So we had a large swing downward last year for debt, and now we're having to swing the opposite way. Really what you want for debt service ideally is to stay at a constant, so I think our goal, you know, moving forward will be to stay at that constant. And when you levy for your debt, what I'm saying down below is you have to levy for 105% of what is owed for principal and interest statutorily, so. So now, here's the numbers, what's our proposed 2025 tax impact to the average valued home of $433,500? So I laid out the math here, one, one thing that's working for us is we now have an exclusion amount. Our exclusion went away for any home that was over $418,000, but now, we do have an exclusion amount of $7,500 for this example, which is helping us. And our tax rate of 41.93% brings this example to the average valued home of $1,786, which is $78 more than this home paid last year. So it's about a 4.6% increase. I laid out the proposed tax rate for all Carver County cities around us, so you can see the 24 rate and then the 25 proposed rate. I also calculated, what is that house going to pay on a $433,500 home? You can see that Carver is in the top half, which I think is fantastic.
So here's where my nitpicky is going in. We look at these all the time, so we see them, is it possible for this slide and the next slide to flip so that the highest is at the top?
As someone who doesn't see this all the time, they're going to look at, oh, Carver's highest on the list, where we're actually lowest on the list.
Oh, you want the, okay. Yeah, so flip, so hamburgers at the top.
Sure, yeah.
That's a great observation.
Sure.
Check those in.
My brain works different, but yeah.
Same as this one.
Yeah, okay. So then I also called out our peer cities, as you can remember, we have a peer city, and we're in the top third of this one. And so, these are, these are cities that have similar demographics, tax rates, et cetera, and as you can see, almost all of them increased their tax rate for this upcoming year.
I'm all footbound, too.
Yep. And then this is just to show, how has our tax rate changed over the last many years, 11 years? And then you can see we're trending downward. And then I took seven actual homes that I, I took from last year as well, I kept the same seven homes, took their actual market value from 24, their actual market value from, proposed from 25, and then I calculated the city tax. So you can see how, when these people get their, you know, taxes, what the City of Carver rate would be, what the increase or decrease would be.
Do we have actual homes in Carver that are in that 100,000?
Mm-hmm.
We do, okay.
So as we're talking about property taxes as a monthly service bill, for the average valued home, they pay about $148 a month for everything, from police coverage to snowplowing, to streets we deem, building, you know, all of it. And so I broke it down, do you want this one to be lowest to highest, or?
No.
Okay, all right, so this, so this is how, how a bill would look.
That's one of my favorite slides.
I like it, too. Does anybody have any questions? This looks great.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for continuing to keep the franchise fee stuff in there, I think that's such an important part of the equation that maybe only we recognize, but I still think it's an important part of our story. I think that's great that you guys have done that.
Do you want to move around that table, we're listing those cities, put a little asterisk above the ones that you charge franchise fees? Like, because Chaska, Chaska does, right, and we're close, you know, around Chaska, Victoria, Chatham, and Luntz area?
Sure.
So just...
It's all of them except for...
All of them except for us, so.
Or, and Carver, Mayor in New Germany.
Yeah, so then it would be, hey, look, we're low and don't charge franchise fees.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And if we can figure it out for our peer cities, do we have any idea?
We've asked about that before, that we don't really have any examples of what...
We've asked about that before, that we don't really have any examples of what that looks like, do we?
I could try.
Tell me.
The, what the franchise fee is equate to for the average homeowner.
Funny, you should, oh, for the average homeowner, I, um.
Or the $433,000 home, right.
So I don't know what that means, but I was curious. So I emailed the mayors of Chaska, Victoria, and Chan Hassen, because I was curious how much they brought in annually. Chaska brings in $5 million, and Chan Hassen brings in about $2 million. It's real money that they're making on these franchise fees. Granted, those are both communities that are three times our size, so, but, there's a difference. And, you know, they're using that money to fund their street improvement plan. Chan Hassen is for sure. I'm still waiting to hear back from Victoria, so.
So can we break that down by household and average?
Call me to ask the mayors to.
Just don't know by looking at their reports.
Their average.
I think it would depend on what services they use, wouldn't it, Mary?
I think so. And it's really, you know, like, I, I have applauded Lynn and Brent before for being so transparent. I tried, granted, it's a system that I'm not as familiar with, but it's hard to go through their public documents and figure out how much that is. And I think generally those fees are one to five-ish dollars a month per utility that participates. So it, it varies, like you said, like, maybe the family doesn't have cable, maybe the household doesn't have, they have everything else, but, you know.
They can also charge based on meter size, commercial versus residential. There are certain variables that would make that, you could get a number, but I don't know how reliable, reliable it would be.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Okay.
Excellent.
All right, the draft 2025 fee schedule, this one second.
Yes, as indicated on the council memo, we are here tonight to take a look at the draft, so the proposed new fees for 2025. And tonight we are looking for feedback, and then we will be bringing the final version to the December 16th meeting, which is the last meeting of the calendar year. And then those fees would then go into effect January 1 of 2025. So we'll start out with the rental facilities, and the ones that are changing were identified in red. So we are increasing, as you can see, the ball field and the field lighting. And then we're also removing some of the wording on some of the rental fees just to make it a little bit more clear. You don't need to include some of that, so.
So if you say Villa Hall, that just means everything that you don't have to call it out?
Correct, rather than calling out. So that's what was on page one. On page two, I do have some paper copies up here of the fee schedule. If anyone is interested, you can let me know. On page two there, we're continuing with removing some of the wording again for clarification, and then increasing some of the facilities, like the park shelters, campsites, and then we've added a section there for items that people can rent or use, use in some of those parks.
Why is there just a tote bag?
What was that?
Because one, one, tote bag, where is all the stuff going?
Yeah. It's like an entire kit?
It's the bags.
So if they damage the tote bag, there's, there's a fee for the entire bag, and then there's a tote bag. If you've been in City Hall in the past, you may have seen them up front. I think they're tucked away for now, but it's actually a tote bag, and it has all of the items in the tote bag to keep everything together.
Okay.
Okay. The next section has to do with utility fees, and I'll ask other staff members to jump in here. If you want to maybe look at the new proposed fees there for utility connection charges, and there's also a new trunk line water and a trunk line sanitary sewer charge. I don't know if anybody has questions on that. There was a memo in the council packet that explained the background and the history and why those fees are in there.
Vicki, I'm looking at the second line down sewer connection charge, CES, and those numbers are identical? Yep. Okay. We get those numbers from Met Council? Oh, okay. And they didn't change us here? Okay. God, sorry, I was anticipating an increase. I know.
Oh, that's the connection.
They haven't increased in like 10 years.
Okay. Gotcha. But that's not the per unit charge, right? That's the, just for the new, new construction, basically, or new connection, that line one?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we pass through to the Met Council.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And then it also includes the water meter parts. There was an increase in that as well. And then the utility rates overall, sewer, water, and stormwater. Again, identifying the proposed new fees for those areas. And then I think most of those numbers came from the long-term financial plan, right?
You are correct.
So unless anybody has any questions, I'm just going to keep moving along. Go ahead.
Was the, which one includes, is that the sanitary sewer includes the Met Council? The one I just asked about, is that?
It's two separate fees. There's the city fee for it and then the Met Council.
The Met Council fee, okay.
Okay, I have a question on, oh, just maybe I went ahead. Yep, sorry, this is the next one.
Are you interested?
I'm good on this one.
Yeah, good.
The next section with the business permit service charges, we didn't have any changes. Liquor licenses, we had no changes there.
Can you back up?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, for the sexually oriented business license fees, I thought we had an ordinance that we couldn't have things like strip clubs and things like that in the city limits. So what?
There, you have to allow space for them, so they're, they're only used in certain areas. I think our industrial district is.
Sure. Okay, all right, so that's over there.
Thank you.
The one thing I wanted to provide a preview for a potential council conversation in 2025 is liquor license fees. To my memory, those haven't changed in 15 years, and there are some increased costs as it relates to sheriff's office coverage for kind of managing those licenses. And I would offer similar to water fees. I think the longer that we go on, and if you don't raise them, and if you do raise them, it becomes a bigger ordeal. So I would frankly expect that at whatever point the city decides to raise those, it's going to be an issue. And you might say, that's fine, we want to keep them where they're at, but I, misrecognizing some of the consequences or unintended consequences of that, I just wanted to at least put that on your radar, not for you to like say like, yes, we want to do that, or no, we want to do it, unless you feel passionately about that today. But I do think it's worth a conversation in 2025 to at least ensure you're collecting what you feel like you should be, and then for the council to ask any questions. I want to provide sufficient kind of lead-up time for both the council and then the bar or restaurant owners to like participate in a full process for that, too. Not that we're rushed at, you know, year end, the last three months, trying to figure out how we land with that.
That's one of those few fees, too, that you have to send a notice to the current licenses for, and give them a 30-day heads up and let them know that you're going to consider an increase, and give them an opportunity to appear and adjust the council if they want, so legally, that's a requirement with that one.
I think that's worth having the conversation. Does anybody?
Can you remind me when we collect those? I feel like it's June, July.
Yes, they run, the current licenses run through the end of June, so we collect it at that time when they do the renewals, like mid-year.
Sorry, Brad, what water fee?
I'm just saying, like, for a period of time in the teens, perhaps, like, the city didn't increase its water rates.
I thought we are increasing our water rates.
In the 20s.
In the teens.
Late 2013, 2014.
Historically.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But we are increasing them, and we.
Correct.
So what was the comment? I guess I missed it.
Sure, it's that, you know, these, the liquor license fees haven't increased in the last 15 years, and so I think there is maybe some unintended impacts that if, if you don't increase a fee for a long time, or don't even have a conversation about it, even a marginal increase might seem overly significant in perspective to someone who's having to pay that fee. So I think I, in saying that I'm advocating for the city council to at least have the conversation, because I'm not sure our license holders probably recognize all the nuances that go into that fee. And so just from an education standpoint, it might be a benefit.
Well, we don't profit off the fee, so, I mean, if there's a reasonable, if we're paying more to manage that, I think we should be assessing that. That just seems logical. Why wouldn't we do that?
Yeah, especially if, like you said, there's costs that we have to pay for the county or whatever, like the, right, they have to do a check-in or something, or some sort of continuing. It would seem reasonable to match our costs.
I think it's worth looking at. I mean, we haven't had an increase in a long time. It's worth looking at. I think, you know, since it hasn't been raised, again, this is a conversation for next year, but rather than going, you know, something double, but we start putting some of these marginal, you know, amounts that it's raising up a little bit every year. I mean, that's how the world works, right? We're like, yeah, we're looking at. And then the time comes for the side, whether they want to do, do it or not.
Right. Probably engage like with ABDA or somebody just to do like a mini study rather than, as Lynn and I arbitrarily doing some calculations based on whatever factors. I mean, you can certainly look at other cities, but that's not necessarily indicative of what it costs to do work here. And there's out, you know, at one point, this was like five years ago, you know, we talked about at least on a staff level, but like with COVID, it just, and bar owners were significantly impacted by that situation. It just felt very, just the timing didn't feel right, I guess.
It wasn't right.
Yeah. Nobody thought that was a good idea to have the conversation then. But I don't hear anybody saying that they think it's a bad idea to have it now, so. Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question? It's, I don't see it here. The outdoor sidewalk cafe fee, what's the, what do we charge for a food truck?
Thirty.
Do we have a number for that?
It's thirty. The mobile, it's called a mobile food unit.
That's all I was looking for.
That's what our ordinance says, so that's the term that we used.
Well, it didn't resonate with you.
I still say food truck.
I took it out of the statute, so don't blame me.
Please don't mind.
I just would like to hear you, like, when you go out and ask somebody to lunch, so do you want to go over to the mobile food unit? Oh, last name, we want to the mobile food unit. It's brilliant.
All right, Vicki, keep us on the track.
Yes. No, that's okay. And then the last part of this section, we increased the labor rates with respect to the large event permit process, where there are special services that are determined, that are needed by those applicants, and then we just brought that up to a current fee. With respect to building permits, we increased building permit fees and administrative fees. There was a council memo from the building department explaining the increase in those fees. And then also, there were some new permits added for demolition, solar, redecking, guard railing, chicken coops, that you will see at the end of this. If anybody has any questions on any of the sections, you can take a look at that or go back.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the residential solar, we're on it now.
Yep, right there on page 10. The three, the new ones there, the four new ones.
So what, what are we looking at? What are we doing with the residential solar permits? How is that working? Because, do you have to go through the state for things with that, too?
Maybe, but what we do, it's a, it's a building permit application that requires inspection, too.
Okay. And what, and, yeah, maybe we just need an explanation of these. Well, when we know we didn't, we got that too long ago. But the residential demolition permit?
Yep. So when we had a contractor come in to demo 216, we needed to create a permitting process to review that permit and then complete an inspection. So if someone wanted to demolish a house to rebuild in Carver, we would require review to make sure like city utilities are capped, like grading is completed, and then inspection.
Okay.
And then the redecking, we didn't have this fee, so we were charging $170 for the deck permit.
Gotcha. So this is just if you're replacing the material on a existing deck without changing its permit?
So it's still reviewed, still an inspection.
Okay, unless there are any other questions on building permits, we'll continue on. Planning and zoning, increased some park dedication fees, and then added a grading permit.
Erin, can you just speak to that? Because that was a council request update for inflation.
Yeah, so we haven't updated the park dedication fee since 2018. So the fee reflected in the fee schedule tonight is roughly eight and a half or nine percent increase to catch up on a couple of years. And then it would be proposed that each year, every time we do a fee schedule, we'd have a discussion about it, but likely to increase back to a percent.
Has that been socialized with any of the developers?
Yes.
Any feedback?
No, we've been sharing that information with anyone we're meeting with.
And nothing that's pretty positive or?
Fine.
Kind of a surprise.
And they're not excited about it.
Not a surprise, but, okay.
Why is the grading permit pulled out?
We've never had one before. So if someone wants to regrade their yard, we require them to send in a plan to make sure the topography matches to their two neighboring houses. So it's, it's a new.
So that's outside of if you're building new construction and.
Yeah, because if someone wanted to do a really substantial landscape project that would change the grade of their yard, we would want to review it to make sure it doesn't adversely impact neighbors.
I really hope that came about because of something you learned in your job, and not that residents came to you with a complaint or a neighbor.
There have been, it's a little bit of both, where some people have said, like, my yard doesn't drain correctly, and we haven't had a process to review it yet. So it's great and a review that Erin and I can both look at it to make sure that it continues to work.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving along. In this section, the fees for the cemetery are being increased. And also, we have some increases in some of the other permits down at the bottom of the page there. And then for utility installation and the roadway obstruction, we, staff asked for some clarification on the naming of that, because there was just a lot of confusion, which, with the way that they were currently worded. So those are the proposed changes that we are asking for. And then on the last page of this one, there is also an increase to the sidewalk when somebody is actually not shoveling their sidewalk, or cutting their grass, or weeds and so on. And then also snowbound vehicles, there are some increase, increases proposed for those fees as well.
Vicki, can I see, go back to the last slide?
Absolutely. I don't have a question.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, yes.
The community gardens, why are we raising them by $5? It's, folks are, you know, spending time and money down there to grow their own food, I guess. I just don't understand why we're giving them another $5.
I think that was a fee that Brent maybe proposed differently, remember?
Yeah, we're, I mean, I guess it's all along the spectrum. We're, from a public services standpoint, we're probably investing quadruple that amount of time for that. And so you can choose to make these things, whatever you'd like them to be, but I just know that with the amount of like specialized maintenance that public services doing, it's, this is more of kind of a garden club if you, but you can certainly look at it like you do softball fields and say, well, we're not going to charge for that, or you could frankly make it free if you, if you wanted to. But that's kind of the basics of it.
I guess for me, when we're looking at people who are growing their own food and food and, you know, insecurity issues, and people, some people do it to supplement every, you know, and they can, keep it supplemental. I don't know, for me, $20 is, I'm fine with the security deposit going up, but I guess, I mean, some things we do in the city, we just do in the city because that's what we do. Will the next year's Landtrac gardener take on some of those responsibilities? I realize that's seasonal, but can they?
Oh.
I mean, would that take some of the work off of public services? Cause they will be part of the public services team, but dedicated to that type of thing.
Potentially, but. You know, not a, not in a significant way. You know, we follow the lead of the council. It's not, the twenty dollars isn't making the city any money anymore than the twenty-five dollars. It's just a matter of like, what is your fee perspective? Just like some of the other pieces, like the, a copy for twenty-five cents. It just depends on how you want to approach your fee schedule and who should pay for it.
Yeah, I appreciate your perspective, but if somebody has a community garden down there, I don't think that the five dollars more in both the deposit or the fee would be that much of a big deal. If it's a compromise, would you one this year and one next year? Keep it twenty for the fee and twenty-five for the deposit? Is that what you're saying? Or what are you saying?
Or, yeah, vice versa. Keep it twenty for the. Yeah, I guess it doesn't matter to me, but.
If that's two, twenty for the plot and twenty-five for the, the security.
So goes up five this year and then the five next year, conceptually, because who knows what will happen.
If it's the security deposit, I mean, if they do have to go clean it out after somebody, that should be the higher one to me.
It's something that we feel, it's something that I feel strongly about. So do whatever you think is best.
Yeah.
Is anybody else on that feeling? I'd like to see them both stay at twenty.
I just have trouble picking specific things out that we like. And I like the community garden too, but a UTV owner may like their UTV TV lower as well. How often do we actually send folks to pick up after gardeners that aren't taking care of it themselves? Have we had to do that?
We get those here, yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind that actually being a higher fee than twenty-five bucks to encourage folks to take care of it.
It's, it's a variety of anytime, and this isn't a judgment, it's an observation. Anytime you have an interaction between residents that are using a city facility, there's this, there's this, I would say there's a whole kind of variety of like random requests that are made, whether it's for water, for, you know, some type of moderate repair, some type of security issue. But I'd use, like I would say the softball fields are the same example, you know, or. And I think your example is a good one too on UTVs. It's just a matter of like, you know, where you want to land on these things. There isn't, there isn't a like best practices other than at some point, you know, trying to create a, I would say a method to like how and when you choose to increase.
Well.
I mean, they're cer, I mean, they're, they're certainly very popular. I think we sell them out every year that we've had them. And I think if we put up double the amount, you put up double, even double the amount of rentals. And it's certainly at twenty dollars, however many beds we have, you know, you're not making money. But I think the argument would be, you know, how much of, how much time do you want to contribute to that effort? But you could list a whole dozens of different things that the city does that they don't charge for either. So this is one hundred percent city council prerogative.
Feels like a lot of discussion.
Yes. I'm just thinking of the person who's renting, who's cleaning out the money first thing and maybe, oh, I don't know, everybody is home like growing food and what they have. Other fifty bucks at a time is, it's difficult enough. But it is well used. Do we have thirties of beds down there? Is that right?
Between twenty and thirty.
Okay.
Probably closer to thirty.
Three, six times four plus the, yeah, but not close to thirty. I prefer to leave it.
Yeah, I would object to that.
Object to.
I will not object.
I'm fine having one go five, but I think both of five is.
Or I leave it at twenty, twenty-two. I don't, I mean, I'm fine either way.
I'd rather you charge people who don't clean up after themselves.
Yeah, I think so.
So is the compromise that the security deposit goes to twenty-five and the garden plot fee stays at twenty? Perfect.
I like that. Yeah.
Okay. I hear three yeses and Lori shaking her head. Yes. All right. That was a lot of conversation for five dollars.
That's all I have. Those are all the proposed changes. If anybody has any questions.
Just Vicky, snowbound vehicle is somebody who doesn't move their car when we pop?
I think so, yes.
That is a phrase, but. I do have a question. We have, it seems like this one never gets quite settled about, we have a downtown area where we have some homes that don't have driveways. Where are their designated spots to go to? What, what's the designated lot? And you have to allow for that to have to be a little more.
We let them park at the end of Broadway and Third Street or to the Third Street lot.
The Third Street lot, okay. Cause they end up Broadway now that we have the getaway, it's, it's filled for other reasons.
But not overnight.
Not at eleven o'clock at night, yeah.
I mean, to be super unvarnished, I, I haven't had a call to park in a city lot in five years.
So we don't talk face to face anymore. We complain on Facebook, but yes.
I'm saying anybody call, like getting, no one has asked in recent memory to have any accommodation because they don't have a driveway or go where, or anywhere to park. But if they did.
I did get a complaint from a home that doesn't have a driveway that said that they've been paying tickets here and there over the winter. So maybe they're not.
Send them my way.
Really aware that they can go to Third Street if they want to, or the getaway. I will.
Cause I mean, for like, uh, Harleys park outside, you know, in that parking lot. So, I mean, we'll need some like, we'll want to work with them on coordinating. So just so that we can make sure that area gets.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's kind of know where, where it's allowed. So that's all.
All right. Moving along to the listening session follow-up for cannabis dispensary zoning regulations.
Thank you, Mary and Council. I suspect that Dave and I are going to tag team this quite a bit. So we are tasked with drafting and adopting language related to cannabis dispensaries and where they can be located in the community. Like the conversation we had about sexually oriented businesses, all uses need to be permitted somewhere in a community. So this is the discussion. Talking about where cannabis dispensaries can be located in Carver. Based on our population, Carver is anticipated of one licensed dispensary. So it would be one business licensed by the state that could operate in city limits. And that permit or the licensing will be not by the state, not by the city. So at your October twenty-first city council meeting, we had a, held a listening session. This was the information that we sent out to our social media. It was in the packet. We reached out to some business owners that we thought would be thinking about this. And we had some feedback at that meeting. We also discussed the cannabis dispensary licensing at the Business Alliance, which was great to get some feedback specifically from property owners at our downtown. So we had three business owners, one downtown property owner and chamber of staff. So in general, the folks that attended that meeting had a consensus that dispensaries are similar to bars and liquor stores that they typically have not had issue with how the bars have operated downtown. They feel similarly to cannabis dispensaries. Something that we talked about a lot at that meeting is that smoking in public spaces is not permitted. So that was a concern that people had just understanding that a little bit better, that people won't be openly smoking outside of the daycare or outside of a business downtown. So at the October twenty-first city council meeting, we heard from additional folks. So we had staff from Carver Elementary, River Wild Learning Center. I will say that the business owner at Business Alliance was also the same as River Wild. So we heard from Jessica Kruger twice and then the Getaway Motor Cafe. We also got additional feedback. The mayor reached out to OTV Kids on an email. We did as well, but you got quicker feedback than we did. And there was an email that was sent to the council today requesting a thousand foot buffer from a daycare. Dave will have some additional feedback about that.
Can I add one more? So I also connected with Matt Carver today, owner of Next Steps. Matt, and I didn't know this until today when I talked to him, also sits on the Carver County Planning Commission. And so he couldn't remember what they decided for daycares at the county level. But he said that that would be his wish for the city of Carver too. So either five hundred or a thousand feet.
So state statute right now is allowing for five hundred feet from daycare. So the one thousand feet would be a departure. So just keep that in the back of your head as we continue through. So many communities are creating buffer distances. Every city can take it how they want. They can add buffers, they can not add buffers. They can include different uses. So typically what we're seeing is daycares, parks, residential treatment facilities and schools are getting the buffers from other communities. It's the planning commission and city council's discretion if you would like to have buffers in these spaces. So it's a thousand feet from schools, so Carver Elementary, and then five hundred feet from daycare, residential treatment facility or public parks.
And this is what currently is the state?
It's in state, that's your guess.
As a discretionary buffer, but it almost is like a, this is what you can do if you want cities, just for what it's worth.
So you can go up to this? Is what the state's saying that you can go, okay.
Yeah, I would strongly advise cities not to go above and beyond these numbers. What I'll tell you just anecdotally from working with a lot of other cities and having colleagues that represent a number of cities. Cities are pretty all over the map on this stuff. It's, I wouldn't say there's a consensus that everyone's doing maximum buffers. In fact, I think that's probably the exception. Some cities are, but I, I think it's a pretty good mix of, you know, we're going to do maybe, you know, five hundred feet from schools and no buffers for other uses. Because really we think, you know, students that are of a certain age might be most negatively impacted by these businesses. And really are there going to be toddlers running around? Trying to, trying to get into, you know, from a daycare, trying to get into dispensary.
Mine, mine, she's pretty feral.
I think that would tell that she's not the right demographic.
So, but it really is a, it's a policy call for the council and you probably saw the little, I don't mean to jump ahead if you're going to get there, Erin, but there is an email exchange today and I know there's a question from the mayor about, you know, can we choose to do buffers in maybe the freeway commercial district, but not the central business district? I think that's fine, especially given the nature of the central business district. It's more entertainment-y, it's more downtown business, retail type uses. And so if you choose to put, you know, a daycare or a treatment facility or other things in those areas, you're just going to have to be understanding that there might be businesses that maybe are more adult oriented type uses, like cannabis or bars or liquor stores or those kinds of things. And so what I would strongly encourage the council to do though, is not to necessarily say, you, I would, I would say either use, do an all or nothing approach for buffers in any particular district. I wouldn't say, well, we're only going to do schools, residential treatment facilities and parks and central business, but not daycare. That seems arbitrary. It seems maybe spot zoneshy because, you know, you're trying to work around one particular business or location maybe. And obviously I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion about that, but that's just my two cents on how you want to think about it.
So that, Dave went through most of that, but so in short, we could not require buffers in the central business district. Having people understand that this is where you come to do business entertainment. There are bars, there was a liquor store. So that is an option, but then we could have buffers in other commercial districts. So Carver Commons has Next Steps, Carver Square has OTV Kids. Both are zone freeway commercials, so they're not central business district. And then Carver Elementary is public institutional. So council member Welch asked that we put together some maps. Two of them look really good. Two of them look really bad. These are the two that look really good. So set your expectations.
Is this something like a five hundred foot? What is the map showing?
The school is a thousand, the deck, the daycare is Next Steps, it's five hundred feet there.
Erin, one more measuring. Is it from property line or is it from?
Property line.
But you can, you can specify too. I mean, what I would say is you probably want to specify ultimately in the ordinance what you're measuring from. Most cities are doing the distance between the property containing the school or daycare and then just the physical building of the dispensary, right? You don't have to do it that way, but I, that's pretty common.
Say that one more time.
You could do like the property line of the school or the daycare, which is going to be like for the elementary school, it's a pretty big piece of property, right? To the, and measured from the closest point of that property to just the building, the dispensary itself, not the property that the dispensary is located on. Because that's going to maybe provide a little more flexibility. The goal too is you don't want to have buffers that are so stringent that you're effectively saying you can't have these businesses anywhere. That is a de facto prohibition on these businesses. Some cities have to kind of tinker with their buffers to make some areas in the city available for these businesses. Because if you don't do that, you're going to be prohibiting them just because your buffers are so aggressive.
And Erin, is the school a one thousand foot and Next Steps is a five hundred?
Five hundred.
Correct. And these are my two maps that look bad. So just look at the circles. The bars have got picked up on both of these. So left is OTV Kids in Carver Square, which is freeway commercial. And then River Wild is on the right, which is in the downtown central business district. So you can see if we choose to move forward with the buffer for River Wild and the central business district, it essentially washes out most of our commercial district downtown. So tonight, what we're looking for is just a back, Next Steps is that, so we're obviously up to November eighteenth, city council work session to talk about the listening session. This Thursday, the planning commission will review what you talk about tonight. So it'll be a back-to-back during this week. So tonight here, Thursday at Planning Commission. And then the planning commission will hold the public hearing on December twelfth, the final review on the sixteenth. So I'll open it up for discussion and questions.
And just to add, the moratorium expires at the end of the year. So that's why we kind of have a weird back-to-back, back-to-back, back thing. We didn't get model ordinances or anything from OCM until not that long ago. And so every city is going through this exercise.
Is there anybody in the OCM office?
Yes.
No, no, they're hiring. Okay.
I thought it was empty because they all left. But Lucy on LinkedIn, like, hey, I got a new job at OCM. Good for you, Lucy.
Okay, I will go first. For me, hearing from Mr. Blank at our last meeting was pretty poignant. I would like to see a thousand feet for the school and I would like to see five hundred for the non-central business district daycares. So I'm sorry, so I'm saying that the wrong way, but for the freeway commercial zoning area. Based off of feedback from those individuals.
And that doesn't, that's not different than the state statute, right?
Well, it's, it's taking advantage of the maximum buffers for freeway commercial, but not for, it sounds like no buffers, central business, is what you're suggesting.
Correct.
Does, does that basically say the only spot we're putting it in central business, right? Cause if you look at the current, I guess the, that would be over by the Fleet Farm.
Fleet Farm.
So it could also be in an industrial district, so areas north of two twelve.
And other business districts in our growth area. Isn't there a commercial area where down in the Carver Parkway jocks to Jordan?
Yes.
Oh, upon annexation, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I guess I'm just saying it's.
Yeah, no, just, yeah. Practicality, just to underscore is if you have one of the central business district, that'd be the max.
That's true. That's true.
Until we get what populated?
Twelve thousand.
I'm fine with that. I don't have any issues with that special because it's not like we're going to have fifteen schools here and we're going to have thousand of buffers around every school. I'm super happy to, that we're talking about exempting the CBD eight district. The central business district. Uh, because it is, uh, it is somewhat transient in the businesses that come in and out. And I don't think that, I mean, we have two of this here right now. I think we see that it's working okay. So, and this is a unique area down here anyway. Anyway, it's just the way it operates. So if we exclude this area down here, I don't have any issues with the other buffer zones.
I completely agree with that. I think that's the right way to go. And I also don't like deviating from state statute or guidelines. And I think we're within that.
I, I would like to, what I would support is five hundred feet for the school. And then no buffer for everything else. When it comes to a zoning decision, that's what I support.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely think we should have a buffer on the school, but I'm kind of hesitant on the other zoning areas. Is it, I know we're looking over the zoning regulations themselves. Could we specifically prohibit it in certain zonings? Like if we wanted it not into freeway commercial, or is there not?
It could. It just won't be a permitted use.
Yeah, not permitted.
Yeah. Yeah. And I don't want to expand the discussion greater than we need to for tonight's purposes, but just so everyone is aware. We're just talking about the retail. But just so everyone is aware, we're just talking about the retail cannabis right now. There's going to be, the zoning change that Aaron is working on is going to allow a number of other cannabis businesses that have nothing to do with retail, right? Your, your warehousing and your manufacturing and your cultivation, those are all uses that we have to allow in the city. I suspect they'll be in your freeway commercial districts just because that's, they're all very industrially.
And with the timing of this, we need to adopt this ordinance at the end of the year. So this, it might be a gap for a little bit. And then the zoning ordinance, we look at it again and say, it's working well in this district. We can make an amendment there. But we need to move forward with this. So if you are feeling like you don't want to permit it in freeway commercial, creating the buffer from daycares would be a way to do that right now.
Lori, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of leaning a little more towards Lori where I, school definitely makes sense to me. But I think smart zoning and planning would fix other cases. So I don't necessarily know we need a buffer per se, but.
I just wanted to hear your.
Can you go to the slide that showed the OTB Kids with the.
The terrible.
So that's, you might have to remind me. Was that, that was 1,000 feet or 500? That's 500. Correct. Oh, so one of the things too, and when it comes to zoning and wanting businesses to succeed and have new businesses and that one on the left, whatever retail, if things become different where the chiropractor and daycare is and Ms. East, I believe still has some unused rental space, that cancels them out. That's my concern with other things. I mean, this is kind of a, you know, weighing different things, but that's the example we have. And this is the state, they, they can handle the licensing, but when it comes to our zoning, we're not, I don't even know. Are we like fourth square mile? We don't have a lot to work with. A lot of elbow room. So the school just, I think just be good partners with the school. You know, a buffer of 50 feet or 500 feet, sorry, would also not impact, can you pull up the school one please? If that was reduced to 500 feet, that wouldn't stretch out into those other potential businesses.
That kind of defeats the purpose of a buffer though.
Is the buffer that you don't want the business there or is the buffer that you don't want the kids wandering over there?
The buffer is that we have been asked by the school and the businesses not to have, to have a buffer in place.
We've been asked by one person that represents that school. I don't, I don't want to like, think that's everyone's, you know.
No, but I think.
Recommendation, but I'm trying to just, or to balance what's good for our residents, our future businesses, what's good for the city. That's what I, and work within the parameters of the state statute. I would be more comfortable seeing the school as a public entity, educational area be 500 feet.
But I still think it should be 1,000 and based off of the feedback that we've received from the management and staff and owners at OTB Kids and Next Steps in favor of 500 from, in the freeway commercial district.
And the end of year deadline, I mean, that is the deadline to establish this buffer, but we could choose to change that.
Yep, at any time.
You can, just keep in mind that if a business establishes and you then later change the buffers, they'll be grandfathered in zoning provisions. So you can't necessarily later decide you want them out, but.
Understood, but we only have until the end of the year to establish a buffer. I don't know. I think if I'm, I think I'm speaking for more also residents than not that would want to see a buffer from the school and the daycare, not just the businesses.
I mean, I for sure want to see one from the school and I appreciate the other comments here because it helps think about all the perspectives.
I also think it's going to be easier to put these kind of guardrails, if you will, in place now. And maybe take a look at this annually if we so choose. And easier to hold back a little bit at a later date than have to decide that we need them in place and why didn't we do this? And what were they thinking for ever sitting in our chairs?
Do we, Dave, this is a question for you. So do we feel the OCM has kind of got itself together now or is this?
I don't know. I don't know how long, they don't have the rules yet. They published draft rules. That was in like August, but they haven't done anything since. Their model ordinance was, there was a lot to be desired there. I don't think they have a director yet. They've got some staff that are doing their best to be helpful. I just don't know how long it's going to take them to actually start licensing businesses. They claim they're supposed to do these license pre approvals, lotteries in the next couple of months. I'll believe it when I see it. That's a lot. I mean, this is a significant change in the law and they have, they've had no clear director because there was one hired and that person saw the door pretty quickly after some things were exposed. So I hope so, but I, I don't know how soon it will be to answer your question.
Okay. So I'm just, okay, so if I'm standing at the school right now and I'm thinking of how far away the QuickTrip is from it. And if there was going to be, let's say, one up in the upper right angle or whatever up there. I do think if we're talking about how we're measuring though, because Dave, that was something you were talking about, that you measure to the front door of the building rather than the property line. Maybe that gives.
The closest point of the building, not necessarily the front door, the building, the physical building itself.
Okay.
So you would go, maybe if I, help me understand what you said, but maybe I misunderstood.
So we would measure from here instead of here. So I did from here for the map.
Ah, you did the entire property.
So it would probably take this down.
Yeah, I mean, I think the point of the school property being the thing is because you have kids usually at, you know, when they're at school, they're all over the grounds. School grounds after school before school. But when you're talking about the business itself, all you probably really care about are accessing that business, right? So I'm only hearing discussion about daycares and schools. There are those other two things too that I think we're curious about. I mean, there's residential treatment facilities. I don't even know where those are. That's a big question mark. A lot of cities don't know where they are unless they delve into that. And then obviously park features that are used by kids. You can also have a 500 foot buffer from, from those.
Can I ask then if we put this in for, if we put this in and included, we don't have to include public parks or residential. That's just language that's already there. We don't have to do that. Because my thing in that, if we put in 500 around every park that we have, I mean, we would just.
It would just be features though, right?
It's the feature of a park that's used by kids. So playgrounds, ballfields. I mean, you look at the buffers. If you go to that other map, I mean, I see a bunch of baseball fields over there that I'm guessing those are used by kids. And if you had a 500 foot buffer from those, we're talking on another buffer. So, yeah.
Just for me personally, at staff level, it'd be easier to do property line than to be talking to someone about your distance to the back door of the school.
Okay, right. Okay, hold that thought for a second. For the residential treatment facility and the public park though, I would be, I guess, more in favor of taking that out because if we keep public parks in there and, and we get residential facilities, we may not even know where they're at, right?
We don't.
Yeah, we might know because we, someone told us we drove by. But I would be fine with the daycare at 1,000 feet for now and then a revisitation maybe after things get themselves better. But I just don't think, if we include the public park and the other one in there, one, we don't know where it is, public parks, we're going to have red dots all over the town.
And the likelihood is?
Likelihood is you're going to have an establishment in your central business district. And so you, this issue probably won't come up.
Does it come up?
Won't come up for another 10 years until you reach a population of 12,500. So.
I don't hear anybody saying, am I correct in here, saying that I don't hear anybody saying parks and residential treatment, right, facilities?
Parks would keep extending it indefinitely, right?
I have a question. The daycare, what about the home daycares? Because they're licensed.
Yeah, those are included in the.
Then we have to figure those out too.
So, but what I'm proposing is for the freeway commercial district.
Daycare or freeway commercial? Because there's the two daycares there, not home daycares.
Which would be typically in a residential district.
Which should not be permitted.
Yes, so just to clarify, we're still, we have to define daycare as consistent. As licensed daycares, any daycare. But there's a very little chance that it's going to affect your freeway commercial district, I think is what the point is.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So we don't do the licensing for in-home daycares. So we don't typically know where they are.
But if we want to say daycare is in the freeway, you can't say that?
Here's what I'm saying. And maybe I'm wrong, but nix it, not nix it, put a buffer up in the freeway commercial district. In the daycares that are in the freeway commercial district that doesn't have anything to do with home daycares. That takes them out of the picture. Cool.
Cannabis dispensaries would not be allowed in residential areas. So that covers home daycares too.
But one could push a buffer out to overlap the spot. So that's why, okay. So I'm on board with that. And removing again the treatment facility in the public parks.
And then again, sorry, are we also determining if we're counting from lot line or from building? Or is that not up to us?
I would.
It is up to you. Yeah, and I would defer to Aaron.
I would strongly prefer we did property line.
Let's do, I like property line too. Any?
I mean, I think it's easier, but.
I think it's more clear.
I think that's more clear that way.
Yes.
Yes, but I'm still at 500 feet for the school and zero for everything else.
Okay. I think I hear the majority however, saying 1,000 feet. I think the three of us said 1,000 feet for school, 500 for daycares and the freeway commercial.
And there's a public hearing on Thursday.
No, December. So the planning commission will look at it at the meeting on Thursday, just for discussion on the 21st. The public hearing will be held on December 11th.
In December. Gotcha.
Perfect timing. We're pretty close to 10 to the hour, but I want to give this as much time and need as it does. It feels like we're done with this conversation, but if anybody has anything else, I just want to give the opportunity.
I'm finished.
Well, yeah, I guess just, you know, based on the step, we're saying that the only spot is the commercial business district, right?
Or the one.
For the current, for currently, yes.
Or, or industrial, or commercial industrial.
Okay.
You can put it up next to Fleet Farm out there.
Yeah, yeah, just, okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. All right. And I would entertain a motion to, do you have what, you know, from us?
Yep.
Okay, good. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
My council member Person, second by council member Welsh. All of us here say aye.
Aye.
Dave, I have a question for you.
Even the little girl?